We'll stop the Finance Subcommittee meeting. It is November fifteenth at 5:30 PM. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Getchere.
Here.
Counselor Robinson, two present.
Thank you. We also have in attendance today our auditor Kelly Oakes, CFO Connor Baldwin, and Austin Ball, our Assistant CFO. And we have three items on the agenda tonight. The Motor Vehicle Inventory Report, our Year-to-Date Budget Report, Fiscal Year '22, and Fiscal Year '22 Year-End Analysis. If we can turn it over to CFO Baldwin to give us a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And if it's okay with the Subcommittee, I'll jump right into the presentation. We've prepared a few slides that we'll walk through this evening. Please feel free to jump in with any questions at any point, but we'll try to move very quickly through the information. So, on tonight's agenda, there are three items. The Motor Vehicle Inventory Report was an item that was referred by the Council to the Subcommittee. We have an update and some information we're going to share. And then we'll dive into the Year-to-Date Budget Report from the auditor and an analysis thereof from the Finance Department on the last fiscal year, fiscal year 2022, year-ending June 30th, 2022. So, the vehicle inventory, this was a motion made by Counselor Getchere where we provided some information and, you know, we wanted to give an update as to some progress that's been made in updating and improving the inventory and the capital plan itself. So, a little bit of background, according to the Government Finance Officers Association, they recommend that every state and local government periodically inventory the tangible asset, capital assets, so that all assets are accounted for, at least on a test basis, no less often than once every five years. Our current inventory is maintained manually, and typically it's onsite. So, each department is required to maintain their own inventory. The data is collected each year for capital budget purposes in the spring from the relevant departments, namely DPW, Water and Sewer, et cetera. Our mileage is tracked in a software program called Fuel Master. That's something we'll talk a little bit about making some improvements to as well. It's worth noting that the last major investment within a single capital budget was in FY 2015. However, over the years, the Council has attempted to make some investments in some of the heavy vehicles through some of the annual capital loan order appropriations. However, what is, you know, I want to make special note of is the recent investments in equipment, in assets that's been made by the City Council. So, the first two, we've talked about recently, the number one being the investment through the ARPA funds in the fire apparatus. So, there was a $10 million allocation made in the City Manager's presentation for almost a complete replacement of the fire apparatus. The Fire Department is currently investigating, you know, the needs of the department and is talking with vendors, but will very soon be making some purchases. There are a number of ways we can go about procuring fire apparatus. There are a number of collaborative opportunities for the city to look to in order to assemble these vehicles. There was also a $2.7 million allocation from the Water and Sewer total for vehicles. These are things like inspection trucks, in the TV inspection trucks that inspect the sewer lines, hydro excavator in the Water Department, street sweepers, a vector cleaning machine, et cetera. In the FY 2023 budget, capital budget that is, there was also a $350,000 appropriation investment in the vehicle replacement in the DPW in the streets and in the parks divisions of DPW. One year earlier, in the '22 capital budget, there was a million dollars allocated to DPW heavy vehicles. Since that appropriation, the DPW has encumbered funds for dump bodies, street sweepers, wheel loader, a new boom lift, and a skid, excuse me, a skid steer among other vehicles. In FY, with the appropriation from the FY '22 free cash, there was another 1.1 million appropriated by the City Council for a fire ladder truck. And then finally, just most recently, with the Manager's contingency in the FY 2023 budget, there was a $543,000 investment in two dump trucks, 30,000 pounds for the DPW streets. And that was appropriated by the Council back in September of this fiscal year. So, the way in which the Finance Department and the City Manager were looking to improve our capital plan, one was by applying for a grant. So, the, on tonight's agenda, City Council agenda, the city was awarded a $22,500 grant from the Governor's Community Compact. It's a subsection of that grant program called the Best Practices Compact Grant. And so, with that funding, we are going to engage a third party to come in and assist with a review and analysis of our existing capital plan, and also engage professional services to update the city's asset inventory. And so, on the slide in front of the Subcommittee tonight is a number of specific data points that we're going to inventory and capture and build into Munis. We have a module within Munis called the Fixed Asset Module. And so, this tool will capture things like a photo of the asset, the make, model, year, VIN number, license plate, et cetera. Will also track certain routine maintenance as it's made in an electronic format that can be recorded, reported against in a more easier format than what we needed to do to comply with the motion of the Council this most recent time. So, those are some updates on the vehicle inventory. I just want to pause in case there's any questions, and then we'll move right into the update on the FY 2022 year-end results.
Let's look at you.
Thank you, Chairman Scott. Connor, as you know, the Fire Department vehicles are a challenge, obviously, to replace because of expense and the amount that going forward, and so are some of the DPW stuff. When we looked at the report that you gave us, it never gave us a cost, an estimated cost to each vehicle for replacement. So, it's very hard to justify on where we're putting money when we look at your FY '23 or even further out budgets, because without cost, and we see budgeted numbers that are so round, you see some that are $250,000 for DPW trucks. It makes one wonder. So, when we look at the Fire Department, and I'm thinking the ARPA funding, and I think we've had this discussion before, we look at currently replacing the vehicles that we're talking about, if we go and replace three more, Engine Six, Engine Eleven, and Ladder Four, if we look at those three, those three, the current year of those vehicles are 2010. If we replace those in the other, in addition to the ones that we have in place, what that will do is, by the time we get the vehicles in-house, it'd probably be 2024 or early 2025.
That's right.
Which would put those at 15 years, 16 years old, so they're already out of use, useful life. But if we change those or we replace those at this current time, what that will do to our engine and ladder in the spare pumper stuff, that equipment, that will change the delta from being 15 to 16 years old to under 10 years. So, to be, your oldest vehicle in that fleet would be a 2017, which would push it probably to eight, nine years old, which would give us a larger buffer for future years budgeting. You could replace one every two years at that point until you got to the place. I just think that by not looking at these three, it's going to run into, okay, we got these delivered, now we got to purchase more, and now we still have that delta to wait, and we're still going to fall behind in the goal of what the useful life expectancy is of it. And, you know, I understand the money and the ARPA stuff, but I do think that commitment to doing those three vehicles will have long-lasting benefits for all. And I know you've, I've spoken to you about this. It just, to me, makes more sense because of the delta in future budgeting that we can't project at this point, in delivery of vehicles, which we're not going to be able to project. Right now, what is the timeframe they're saying that they can deliver a fire truck within?
I think the timeline right now is somewhere in the magnitude of 18 to 24 months, and that's what we're seeing with both fire apparatus and heavy equipment on the DPW side. The fire apparatus, you know, it's been my experience that those trucks take a significant amount of time to build, and then they need to be inspected to make sure that they meet our standards in Lowell as well. And so, it's commonplace for the Fire Department to have to go visit it, and then maybe there's some tweaks that happen thereafter. But it is something that takes a good amount of time, to your point, regardless of the supply chain issues that may be exacerbating that. It is a long process to build the fire truck.
I do think that adding these three into the process would give us a delta, more of a range that we could start capital planning easier in the Fire Department end. The Police Department looks very good when you look at their replacement, the way they go about their replacement process. But DPW is in the same position where, you know, we're not outlining exactly which pieces we're replacing. All we're outlining is pieces are being replaced. So, for me, as a person, as a lame person from the city, and I look at this replacement program, I don't really look at it much as a capital plan, because normally what communities do is they allow people to come in and actually view what's being replaced. So, we know this is going to be replaced in our years. You can come take a look at it, look at the rust that's there. Because a lot of times what happens with municipal vehicles, especially in an inner city, is they're low-mile vehicles. But there's a lot of running time on them. They're around salt, they rot away. You see things that mostly the normal person won't see. I just think that if we could go forward and we could take any, make any changes to this, I would ask that we would include what pieces of equipment in the five-year capital plan we are looking at replacing. And of course, it's a moving, it's a moving target, because one may blow a motor between, and you got to switch that out and switch one in. But, and also, if we could provide in there what we think the future cost is of the vehicle. And it's not a hard cost, it's just a cost of, okay, a 10-wheel has cost $320,000. That's the replacement. Because right now, I can't tell what's being replaced in any of the departments when I look at it. And I just think it, when we go forward, it makes easier budgeting for everybody to say, look, here's a picture of this vehicle that's getting replaced, here's what it is. And also, there's a trade-in value for the vehicle that is going, which is very minimal in our world. But those are my concerns when I look at the inventory list. I would, I would ask that we would really reconsider and add, you know, Engine Six, Engine Eleven, and Ladder Four. And just take a look at, those are the 2010 vehicles that are in the ladder and engine replacement program. And really think hard about that, because I think it will make everybody's job easier come fiscal year '26. But that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Getchere. And I would just echo the sentiments. I think it was the feeling of the Council members when it was referred to the Subcommittee, especially over the fire vehicles, that we're replacing this large group, but we're going to find ourselves, we could find ourselves right back in the same situation pretty quickly, replacing one every two years, and how long they take to be delivered and everything else. So, I would just agree with Counselor Getchere. If there's more that we can do, then that's just definitely something in the area that's a priority. Thank you. Any comments? Okay. CFO Robert, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to agree with the Subcommittee and say that, you know, that this is our intent. The administration's intent is through this exercise, engaging the Collins Center to help us kind of beef up the capital plan, include more information. We'll be able to pinpoint, you know, exactly which vehicles by, you know, their asset number, how much rust is on the vehicle, for future capital planning purposes. And that is why we're going through this exercise. We fully intend, as we build out this plan, to bring this back to the Council and to the Subcommittee, to show the progress and to show the enhancement to the capital plan with a goal to make next year's FY 2024 through FY 2029 a more comprehensive capital plan. I just also wanted to make a comment about the fire apparatus. It is only through this opportunity available to us through ARPA that we're able to get up to a place where really we needed to be all along. But that can't be it for the city. And so, it is, you know, I think I'm just kind of agreeing with the Subcommittee here, but it's always been the case, in my experience with fire, the current Fire Chief and Fire Chiefs prior to him, you know, we need to have at least one piece of fire apparatus in the capital plan every year. And if we can manage that within our finances, we'll be on a good cadence to maintain a certain average, average age of the fleet to be below, you know, 15 years maybe being the max. We want to get down to like seven years or newer. You know, those trucks can last a number of years. They're not like a personal vehicle, they're a heavy asset. But that is our intent, and we hope that over the course of the next few years, that we're able to build up the inventory. The City Manager has made that very clear. Thank you for your, for your time.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. One of the things I know was discussed some years ago included DPW. And it was taking a look at potentially implementing a software for the mechanics in the garage. So, that would allow real-time tracking of vehicles. Anything that they notice would be input in, and if you broke vehicles down by asset number or whatever, you'd be able to look and see exactly in real-time when was the last time this was serviced, the maintenance plate and everything too. Because I know Fire Department is a priority, obviously, in their large-ticket items. But also, I mean, we're getting into winter, and the DPW, salt and sanders and plow trucks, I mean, those need to be looked at as well, I'm sure. So, I think that might be one opportunity to implement across the board for the Fire Department mechanics as well as DPW, because they service pretty much water and other departments down in the DPW. So, I think that would give us some real-time data. Thank you.
If I may ask, so is that the maintenance that they're doing right now, it's just all paper, like the maintenance?
It is my understanding that for the most part, it's, you know, there are records that are kept, but they are very manual, to the extent that they use Excel or spreadsheets to track these things. You know, they live on that local computer at DPW. But what we're, what we're talking about here and what we're engaging, the Collins Center through this grant, is to build all of this information into Munis. And so, you know, enterprise-wide, we'll be able to track those kinds of things that Counselor Robinson said about, when was the last time Truck 123 had an oil change, or was serviced, or had the, whatever, this is not my specialty, but, you know, the tubes replaced, or the oil changed, like I said. Those are things we'll be able to track within the system, we'll be able to report against, the DPW will be able to report against, and I think will extend the useful life of a lot of these assets.
I also think with a system like that implemented, it'll allow during budget season even additional. So, if you're seeing Street Department, large sanders frequently using these kind of filters, these kind of belts, all these small items to keep the trucks running in regular routine maintenance, it'd be easy to stockpile them instead of trying to chase parts down. Same thing in the Fire Department. If there's routine maintenance items that they need, especially with the supply chain being what it is now, it'd be easier for the department heads to order ahead and have some extra inventory in stock. Thank you.
Is that it? CFO Baldwin, if you want to continue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the next item on the agenda is the Year-to-Day Budget Report. So, in September, the auditor provided the Council with a detailed Year-to-Day Budget Report for all of the General Fund and Enterprise Fund spending. The chart that's on the screen and here in the chambers categorizes those, well, it sorts them by category, I should say. And so, just a year-over-year look in 2022 in the General Fund, the total expenditures were $428.6 million. If you look across, and I'll dive into some of these categories in more detail, you know, we saw an increase, a significant increase in education. That can be driven back to the increase in the Chapter 70 funding associated with the Student Opportunity Act. There was a large increase in what's called the General Government category. But, you know, what that is, if you dive into the number, is a lot of the inter-fund transfers get recorded in the General Government category. And so, appropriations from free cash, some of which I mentioned for some of the vehicles that were purchased. But when the free cash was certified by the Department of Revenue this year, those expenditures, when they get recorded on the general ledger, show up under the General Government category. So, if you look year-over-year, '21 to '22, it gets recorded in there. But this is just an overview. And then the next topic I want to cover is education. And so, the city just recently submitted to the School Department our Maintenance of Effort Report, and the School Department reported to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, what's referred to as the Schedule 19. It's the year-end report to the state. It's an annual reporting requirement by the, every public school district in the Commonwealth. And our 2022 required spending, which we commonly refer to as net school spending, was $232.6 million, 232, 665, 678. Our actual spending in FY 2022 was $241 million, 290,289. So, for FY 2022, now, these have been submitted and certified by our internal auditor. They do still undergo a process of another compliance and audit at the DESI level, but we exceeded the net school spending requirement by 8.6 million. So, to put that in perspective, the chart here compares the FY 2022 dollars over or under net school spending for Lowell compared to some of our peers in the gateway communities. It just kind of underscores the commitment to education and the amount of dollars spent in the Lowell Public School District in FY 2022. So, as part of this same report, there is a projection for the next year that comes with the submission of the report, and we are projected again to exceed net school spending in FY 2023. And so, that is a testament to the City Council's commitment to education. Moving on with the analysis, another important component of our look back on the year has to do with our fund balance. So, this, this slide here discusses the fund balance in the General Fund. You know, there's a couple of notes here for background. Fund balance is an important indicator of a community's financial position. An adequate fund balance must be maintained in order to allow the city to meet its obligations in the event of economic downturn, excuse me, downturn, and/or an unexpected emergency. Because of this, the city has established a reserve policy. That's something that's included in the budget every year. And our policy goal is an unassigned General Fund balance on a GAAP basis, as of June 30th of each year, equal to or greater than 10% of the ensuing year's tax levy and/or, it should say, total General Fund balance as of June 30th of each year, equal to or greater than 7% of the ensuing fiscal year's operating revenue. So, I just threw a lot out there, but to make that, boil it down a little bit, there's a calculation on the bottom, and that is a big number. So, what the GFOA would consider a sufficient fund balance level for the city, at 7% would be 28.4 million. If you look at the historic unassigned, excuse me, undesignated fund balance, the city has typically hovered around 7 or 8 million. There was a large increase in the fund balance that came as a result of FY 2021. And so, there were a number of reasons for that. We had a lot of federal money to use, and so, we're not expending a lot of money out of the General Fund. There was a decline from a historic high of 22.4 million in FY 2021 to 2022, but our year-end fund balance is 14.3 million. That is still much higher than many years prior. And, you know, the city is in good financial position. If we were to meet that policy goal, we would need to pull back on spending. But I don't know that that's a recommendation that we're making to the Subcommittee right now. You know, I think that the $14 million level is sufficient, but when our Standard Empores or Moody's are looking at our balance sheet and are doing credit ratings, these are some of the things that they look at. So, for the Subcommittee's review, and we just wanted to present this information. So, moving on, in the same category of reserves, this is to talk a little bit about our stabilization funds and some of the special purpose accounts that the city has, special purpose stabilization funds. So, the stabilization fund, which is what is commonly referred as the rainy day fund, at year-end FY 2022 was 13.9 million. Now, it's important to remember, here we are almost halfway through FY 2023, there was an appropriation in the FY '23 budget of 3.2 million. So, that will reduce the rainy day total. It is usually our strategy, when the free cash is certified, to replenish that appropriation from stabilization, to keep us on even footing or to build on it, and which is, that is something we've been able to successfully manage over the course of the last several years. These other special purpose stabilizations were established at one point or another, either by the Council, or in the case of the SPED stabilization, the School Committee, and can only be used for a specific purpose. We have the municipal building stabilization, which is something we've talked about before. That was established using special, a special provision under municipal modernization whereby 25% of the marijuana excise receipts go into this special fund that is to be used for improvements to municipal buildings. Most recently, the Council made an appropriation to the library to fix the elevator. We made an appropriation to the Police Department to repair the roof on the Arch Street Garage. So, these are the kinds of expenditures that this fund is supporting. The SPED stabilization, which has a year-end balance of 2.9 million, was established by the schools. It required City Council approval to set it up. But these are funds that the School Committee appropriates to offset future spikes in special education costs. So, the School Committee has yes to make an appropriation out of it, but they currently have $2.9 million in that account. And for the OPEB trust, and I want to kind of contrast the OPEB trust, the amount in it with our outstanding liability, which is something we'll talk about, we talked about as we reviewed the FY 2021 audit a few months ago, and when we review the next year's audit. It's something to bear in mind. The OPEB trust balance at the end of FY 2022 was 12.5 million. Now, that's a reduction over the prior fiscal year, and that has a lot to do with losses that we saw in investment. that we saw in investment. The market took a turn in the last fiscal year, and so we realized losses in our investments. We've seen, we've seen the other thing happen to us too, where we've seen interest earnings, but year-over-year, there was a reduction in the OPEB trust. And so the net liability, the net OPEB liability, OPEB is an acronym that we use for other post-employment benefits. These are health insurance, dental insurance, life insurance benefits for retirees, both city and school. As of our most actuarial update on the net liability, that number is $643 million. It is a very large number. Lowell is not unique in, you know, having this type of a liability on its balance sheet, but in comparison, you know, it is going to take us a long time to build up a balance in the trust that would be sufficient to cover that liability, if that is our goal. However, we do have a policy for OPEB funding, and so every year when free cash is certified, 5% of the total, regardless of what the free cash total is, has been appropriated into the OPEB trust. Now, that is something, we talked about S&amp;P and Moody's a moment ago, that is something that is a positive credit factor, and so that is something that we'll continue with moving forward. So one of the last topics here to cover is about debt. And so one of the reporting requirements for year-end by the finance department in the city is to report our debt to the Department of Revenue. And what's shown on the screen here are two charts, the first being about debt service. It's our projection over the next 10 years. It includes our forecasted capital investments. And then the chart on the right has to do with our debt limit calculation. So the city, just like every other municipality in Massachusetts, is subject to certain limitations on the amount of outstanding debt that we can have at any particular time. And that number is pegged on the equalized valuation of the city. And so I'll walk down through the calculations for background here. The equalized valuation as of January 1st of 2022 in the city of Lowell was $11.3 billion. So the debt limit is 5% of that, which equals $568 million. Our total outstanding debt as of June 30th, 2022, was 335 point, excuse me, strike that, $333.5 million. Now, in considerations for the debt limit calculations, some of the debt that we have outstanding is what's known as outside the debt limit. And so there are certain types of debt that don't count towards the debt limit. Those are traditionally school building projects, so the Lowell High School, the accelerated repair projects, et cetera, those are outside of the debt limit. Certain large infrastructure investments like for water and sewer, those are outside of the debt limit. And so in coming towards the remaining borrowing capacity, we back out those totals that are outside of the debt limit because they're not subject to it. And so our remaining borrowing capacity as of the end of fiscal year '22 was $290 million. So, meaning that the city could take on another $290 million in debt. Now, that is one component of the consideration. The other is how much debt service can the budget support? And that is something that we're annually reviewing. Just because we can have the debt outstanding on our books doesn't mean that we have the capacity either within the tax levy or within the council's tax policy to take on that much debt. And so that's something we manage. If you look at the chart that's on the screen, the blue bars at the bottom represent our existing debt. And so you can see that it starts to decline slightly over the course of the next 10 years, but that purple bar that sits on top of it, that is the debt for the Lowell High School as we take it on. And so the city, I don't have the information right in front of me, but we've issued about $50-ish million in debt for the high school. And so the rest will come on over the course of FY '24, '25, '26, and then when the project is completed in 2026, we will have taken on the entirety of the local share of the high school debt. The other bars that sit on top of the purple bar represent our projected debt service for the capital plan. That is something that we evaluate and reevaluate annually, but that is a quick version of our outstanding debt at year-end. And then finally, and I'll save some time for questions, there is an analysis of the enterprise funds. And so every year at year-end, we look at the fund balance of each of the three enterprise funds. We have an enterprise fund for the water utility, the sewer utility, and then the parking department. You know, it's something worth cautioning this subcommittee and the council that we are very close to needing rate increases. And so, you know, we had a rate increase this year for water and sewer. That is something that we're going to need, if we're going to approach this from an incremental level, you know, that number is going to need to be examined. We could also consider it from a large increase in any particular year and then be able to stave off a number of years of subsequent rate increases. So that's something we'd like to get some input from the subcommittee as to the strategy. It has typically been, it has been our policy to increase the rate as incrementally as possible so as to least impact the local users. You know, with some of the enterprise funds, sewer being the one that comes to mind, we have other revenue sources outside of local use. And so, you know, we bill the towns for their usage. We just went through an exercise with the sewer utility as well as a public accounting firm to review our methodology pursuant to the intermunicipal agreements, which lay out the apportionment of debt service for sewer to those towns. So based on the type of debt we incur, whether it's for sewer separation or for other types of capital in the sewer enterprise, we can apportion that debt differently. So for one type, it may be 100% allocable to the towns. For another type, it may be 15%. For another, it may be 90%. And that's all laid out in the intermunicipal agreements we have with the various towns that the Lowell Regional Waste Water Utility services. You know, we will be able to offset and mitigate some of that by using ARPA for a lot of this capital that would have otherwise been funded with general obligation bonds to be financed by the enterprise funds. But if you look at the year-end performance of water, sewer, and parking, they all took really big hits because of COVID. We were able to, using free cash last year, make an injection, a one-time injection of cash into these enterprise funds. And so they're able to make it a little bit longer, but this is a conversation we're going to be having again, and it is likely within the next few months that the administration will be bringing a comprehensive rate proposal to the subcommittee or, well, certainly to the full council about not only amending the rate ordinance, but also making a number of changes to the rate structure and some of our, what has been found to be antiquated components of the ordinance for billing. So that is the entirety of the presentation, and I'm happy to discuss any questions with the subcommittee. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. So you mentioned a couple of things. The 7% that's recommended for the general fund, that in addition to obviously our borrowing capacity, that's what kind of improves or decreases our bond ratings when we have to go, correct?
That's exactly right. And so when they're reviewing our financials, every time we get a rating from S&amp;P or Moody's or Fitch, these are some of the metrics that they review, and the better our performance, the better we are at meeting our policy goal, the more likely they are to upgrade us. If we were to get an upgrade in our bond rating, that has a direct impact on the interest rate we receive when we sell debt. So there is a one-to-one relationship there. That's correct.
Thank you.
Counsel Ketchum?
Thank you, Chairman Scott. Cornet, has our free cash been certified for FY '22?
Not yet for FY '22. We expect that the balance sheet will likely be submitted later in the fall. It's usually in the, well, it varies year to year, January, February. You know, there have been years it's been March. I think one year, a number of years ago, it was as late as April into the beginning of May, but I think the earlier in the calendar year, the better. The city has a large balance sheet, and so the exercise of submitting the balance sheet is, does take some time with the Department of Revenue and is also dependent on their schedule as they're approving balance sheets for all communities in the Commonwealth that time of year.
I have a list of all of the surrounding communities and when their free cash is certified. It seems like even communities our size don't have the issues that we have with getting it certified. When you look at Worcester, theirs was certified 11-1-21 for FY '21. So when you, in FY '20, theirs was certified 11-11-20. So most of them are done before this period right now. And I'm just wondering, and I think the addition of Otter Oats may change some things in here to try to get it earlier so that we can get a better grasp on what we have, but, I mean, I'm not going to go down the road of trying to figure out why's because at the end of the day, when you look at Marlborough, you look at Fall River, Fall Rivers is done in October of the year, the fiscal year that they're actually in. So it's done real early. It doesn't even make it into the springtime. Cambridge, the same thing. Cambridge is actually September, which in Brockton is more like Lowell into March. But that's always a question for me, is when the free cash is certified, because that makes, you know, our jobs all easier if we can get all that certified. Another question is, what is our general fund budget at currently? Yeah, altogether, what is the total amount?
Are you asking for the current fiscal year?
No, what is the general, the, I'm sorry, free cash at? I'm sorry, what is the free cash total?
So the free cash was appropriated in its entirety. There was 17-point-something million that was certified for FY '21. The entirety was appropriated by the council in, I don't know, maybe April of last calendar year? It was this calendar year, last fiscal year, I'm sorry. But to your point, Counselor, about free cash, the city struggled with holding on to auditors for a long period of time, and you mentioned it there, and I'll, I hope that we can hang on to Ms. Oaks for as long as possible, but that has had a lot to do with it. We've, you know, prior to her, you know, we've gone through at least three or four auditors in a short period of time. And so hopefully with some stability in the finance department, we'll be able to push up that date for the council.
Do we have standard operating procedure for closing out so that it gets ready early? Like, do certain departments have to have things to you by a certain period of time so that we could close it out earlier? Because other communities, you look at Lawrence, the same thing. Lawrence is pretty quick at doing this. There's one outskirts year, which was the COVID year, but other than that, they're pretty regular at it. My concern is just getting those numbers earlier so that we can do more, as I think all of you.
Yeah, I mean, I would expect that this year is going to be much different. I already, you know, 90% through the combined balance sheet, which is part of the submission. It start, the whole process starts in September where, you know, there's a treasurer's cash report that's due, the combined balance sheet is next, and then the Schedule A. So that'll report, you know, all the balance sheet accounts and all the revenue expenditure accounts to DOR so they can certify the numbers and certify free cash. So I would expect that it's going to be submitted, you know, definitely by mid-December.
Which department's the most challenged to get the numbers to you?
It's not departments. It's actually me compiling, we, you know, the city of Lowell has a lot of funds, as CFO Baldwin mentioned, so it's going through each fund. You know, specifically like the capital project funds, it just takes a lot of analysis. You know, there's not any work from the departments that holds that up. You know, the auditor's office and the treasurer's office, treasurer has to reconcile cash. We have to reconcile all the accounts receivable. But beyond that, it's mainly my job and just going account by account and making sure everything ties out. So I do think, you know, the problems in the past has been due to, you know, the turnover in the, in the actual auditor's position, so.
Hopefully, we can change that with you.
Right.
Another question is, when we got the year-end report, a couple of things really stood out, real estate tax collections. Where are we at that? At one point, it looked like we were, you know, there were 3 million outstanding in that piece. And also in the motor vehicle excise taxes, we were 2 million outstanding, and personal property was like $417,000 at that point. Have we made headway on that or are we still? Because it looks like when it closes out in other years, you look at the personal property, there was $28,000 at that point. And of course, it's a report that's ran much later than this one that we have in front of us at that time for that fiscal year. Have we made any headway since this report was given in September? Have we gained collections?
So what you're seeing is a point in time at the end of fiscal '22, and it's not uncommon in my experience here in Lowell, and Mr. Ball might be able to speak a little bit to this from his time in the collector's office. You know, we commit with the motor vehicle excise commitment, the whole amount within the fiscal year, which is standard procedure. In Lowell, we do not collect more than, I don't know, I'd venture to say maybe 80% within that year. We do collect that after we issue demands in the next year, but as we progress forward, so if you're looking at all, we're collecting those prior year commitments within that fiscal year. And so all in all, we're collecting about an equal to or greater than number of that year's commitment in revenue in that year. However, it's not tied to that commitment year. And so FY 2022's commitment year, probably 15%, 10, 15% of that will be collected in the next year because we will have to go through the demand process. There will be folks that will pay after the demand is issued, and then, you know, there will be a number of folks who won't pay until they're marked at the registry. And so they'll pay when they go to renew their registration and aren't able to until they pay their excise tax, and that is when that revenue is collected. As it relates to real estate, you know, the same kind of idiosyncrasies occur with the reporting where we usually collect 96, 97% of the real estate commitment for that year within the year. However, the same thing I was talking about with motor vehicle, but at a much smaller scale occurs where we don't collect the rest until after demands are issued or after we enter into the tax title process, and then those collections come in. However, on the whole, we usually collect close to, if not sometimes greater in the case of motor vehicle excise, what we estimate in that year's local receipts.
Okay, and I just have one quick question. On the enterprise funds, the water, sewer, you were talking about rate increases, the need for rate increases. How many tiers do we have right now for water and sewer?
I want to say there's five, but I could be, does that?
And when you institute an increase, do you have to do the same percentage across all five tiers? Can we do like higher usage?
You don't have to.
It's a higher?
And if I may, Madam Chair, you know, I want to say it was not this current year's increase, but the year before, we, that was the first time in many years, we had disproportionately increased the rates. So there was a greater rate increase applied to the higher tier. And, you know, we do not have, which I've come to understand other communities do, separate rates for water and sewer like we do for taxes. So we tax, we have two different tax rates every year, one for residential, one for commercial. There is all one, it's based on tiers, but there are some communities that have a residential water and sewer rate and a commercial water and sewer rate. That is something we're exploring. We're working with a number of consultants on coming up with revisions to these tiers, as well as one of the things that's come up as a potential issue to address is about a minimum usage. And so whether or not, you know, that is something we keep or need to adjust, these are the discussions that we'll be having with the council over the course of the next few months, based on some analysis we've been doing.
Okay, so the ordinances around parking increases to like the residential placard signs, all of that is part of a plan that you're working on?
That's right.
That would help with the parking enterprise fund as well, the static rates on the new meters, the, I mean, the changing rates? And my only other comment is just around the net school. And my only other comment is just around the net school spending that we're over 8 million over, which I just, is very impressive. I was on the school committee for two terms where we were never hitting it or we were slightly over it. And I know this is just the floor, but I think it's just very impressive to see that we've met it like this and that we have the potential of going well over it again this coming year. I don't think there's many gateway cities at all that even come close to what we're doing right now. So I would just commend you on that and can hope to continue seeing that spending on the schools. Thank you. Anyone else, any comments? Motion to adjourn? Second, so moved, meeting adjourned.